This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. We're here now on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021 at 5:02. Well, there's your quelea. Hello. Would you like to take over, please?
Yeah, I apologize. I was having trouble connecting there. So we'll start with the work session. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. So we'll start with board communications and Commissioner Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we are in the midst of COVID. Thanks to staff for all our best efforts. We're seeing more troubles than we'd like to have. I assume that it's a natural part of the evolution of the pandemic, but it's a little unnerving, I have to say. I'm grateful that the vaccinations are going as well as they are, and I hope that everybody who's here will continue to observe the protocols and mask and wash and social distance whenever appropriate and all that kind of things, too. And at the same time, glad to have businesses able to stay in business. I would say that the legislative session is concerning to me because it seems to me that rural Oregon is facing even greater challenges than usual. So I'll look forward to hearing from a lobbyist about that because I have particular concerns about support for housing. And I'm just not as optimistic as I'd like to be. Otherwise, I continue to go to meetings and interact with folks as usual. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. We certainly have unique problems or unique issues in rural Oregon. Commissioner Bangs.
Good evening, everyone. Spring break has been off to a great start, I guess, best way to describe it. I am concerned about the uptick in numbers that we're seeing in regards to COVID positivity cases. I'm concerned mainly, you know, obviously because of the disease, but in the second hand because of our businesses. I've seen such amazing, amazing recovery over the last two weeks, three weeks, that I'll be sad if this trend continues, especially for those businesses involved. Positive reviews. My, one of my children is attending a free camp that is being put on by the National Guard at Camp Realea this week. And there are other free children activities occurring around the district. The Fairgrounds is going to be doing another movie night. I think it's going to be the BFG, and I can't remember what the other movie was. But there's a lot of activities occurring around us, which gives life to the community and lots of smiles. I'm continuing to communicate with constituents about a variety of things. One of the concerns that has kind of popped up in my email this week, and I'm with Margot on here with her update. I'm hoping to hear a little bit more about it, but it, our news has been opening up other counties to vaccination. And so I see aspect of the grass is greener over the other side of the fence, and it's nothing that we can do, I think, as a community or as a county to correct that. We do with what we have. And, and we do a great job with what we have or what we're allotted. But to speak to those, I think it's now 13 counties, I'm not sure, of just the equity issue that people are seeing and they're speaking out about of why is this county further along than that county? And so on and so forth. And I know that our, our vaccination rates are, we're doing great, in my personal opinion, with what we have allotted. But yeah, you know, maybe we can speak to that a little bit here and converse upon that. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs, and I, we will have a public health update, and I think we have made some real progress, and Margot can talk more to, more about that. Commissioner Webb.
I'll wait until, until our, our main session for, for my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Toyoka.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, you know, on the COVID front, just for this portion, I'm going to take a positive approach to this issue. There is Seaside High School, a couple in the football team. There was a JV player who tested, who felt a little sick, but he got tested, tested positive on a Monday. And then one varsity player on a Tuesday got tested positive. Not great, but what is positive about this is the processes that are in place in Classup County. They went through the protocols. Infrastructure is set where they were had, you know, testing set up for the players and students. They went through the round of testing. Everyone is negative, and they get to resume play, get to resume school activities. So the positive I drew from this is our county, our rural county, the processes are in place. We can handle these little influxes. We just have to utilize the system that, you know, that they've put in place. And I think, you know, as a small rural county, they've done a great job. So that's the positive spin on a situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. I don't have anything. I would like to go right into our legislative update. And I'm just looking here. Is it, is Philip on or? Yes, okay. Philip, I'll turn it over to you. I don't see him.
Well, he was, but he has muted now, and so I don't know. He turned off his camera, so I'm not sure if he had to take a call or something.
Okay. Well, we might as well move into our public health update.
Hello? This is Philip. If I missed you, I apologize about that. My internet connection just died. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Now we are both having issues tonight. Okay, well, then do our legislative update at this time. If you're here, Philip, go ahead and, and get started.
Perfect. Sorry, I apologize about that again. It just, that network connection died and so just called in rather than holding this up. So, um, quick update. I'm going to go backwards a little bit this week and hit some bills first. I have three bills here that we were specifically asked to report back on, and I just want to hit them on the front end. The first is House Bill 3260, and this is regarding local government technical assistance program related to housing. This is Representative Gomburg's bill. It has not received a hearing or anything yet. However, it does have a public hearing and a work session scheduled for the eighth. I have reached out to Representative Gomburg to see if there is anything we can do on this and kind of get an update. Pending that response, I visited with him yesterday, but just it blanked that this was one that I should have asked him about. It looks like it's receiving positive support. And it, basically what this bill does is it does set up a technical assistance program through LOC and AOC. And it asks that the Housing Department and the DLCD work with AOC and LOC to assist local governments in local housing planning, how, setting up and studying housing incentives, marketing opportunities to developers, and it kind of, it's very broad. It's by going through AOC and LOC, I think they were able to maybe alleviate a fiscal with the two agencies. But it does also depend on this bill getting $2.5 million allocated for the startup and setup of this whole thing. So I specifically was asking Gomburg to see if he felt like the fiscal there was going to allow this bill to move forward. And I will report back as soon as I have that meeting with him. And so I guess I just wanted to pause there and see if anyone has any questions about that bill specifically.
Any questions, Philip?
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you for this emphasis. This has been a longstanding project of AOC and LOC, rural commissioners, even urban commissioners working together because this is essential infrastructure if we're to be able to be competitive to get housing grants brought into our areas. So thanks for your work on this, Philip.
Not a problem, and I will definitely report back as soon as I have that meeting with them. I, it's just literally just a mashing of getting calendars to coordinate. The next bill, if it's okay, Commissioner, to move on to would be House Bill 2100, and this is another housing bill. And this is, uh, this is being brought forward by the governor. It's, uh, the original bill was just an implementation of a study. It is being proposed to have a dash one amendment. That amendment goes from taking this as a one-page, one-paragraph bill to a 12-page bill. It did receive a, a work, a public hearing already, and it was very mixed. About half of the people showed up in support, and half of them from Portland showed up in opposition to this. I connected with the agency on it because it is on behalf of the Housing Agency to see where this is moving forward. They have a work session scheduled for April 1st, so they won't have another public hearing, but they're anticipating a work session. And I was just asking if, if there were so much opposition to this amendment, or at least equal opposition as there was support, what was their feeling? They've been instructed to reach out to those that oppose this, one of those being the Human Development Corporation out of Portland, who helped do, and let me just pause. This bill went from just doing a study related to housing to having the Housing Department administer many of the federal anti-poverty programs, having the Housing Stability Council administer and run a lot of the, the grant programs. So those entities that were doing that in cooperation with the state previously seem to be those that were showing up in opposition. So they have been directed to reach out between now and April and try to see if a dash two amendment can find common ground. But they've also been instructed that if not, they are going to push forward. I don't know what that means. They have not had a meeting yet. So I will, I'm going to keep in touch with Nicole at the agency. So they might be moving forward with the current amendment. It's very, it's an amendment that specifically focus, heavily focused on the BIPOC community and how housing grants are being delivered and needing to be done more through that lens of equality. And so I am very heavy on defining what cultural-specific organizations, cultural-specific interests are. And I believe that they need to just fine tune that so that it, so the opposition might feel more comfortable. So it was definitely more technical in nature and opposition than it was against the policy of it. So more to come on that. They just have not had a work, a work session yet. That's on April 1st, and the meeting amongst the opposition supporters has not occurred yet either. And Chair, I just wanted to pause there to see if there's questions on that one.
Any questions? We've got, ask question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is very crucial to the community action agencies as well. So how to keep the robust support insofar as possible for housing in rural Oregon is a key concern of that group and for me particularly. And I think my colleagues, if I can speak for us, share that, that we see the need for housing in rural Oregon and with all due respect for what the realities are in urban areas, not to lose the focus so that we have our housing out here, too. Thank you.
And Commissioner, I would be remiss to not mention that that did come up in part of the conversation that the, in one portion of this bill, it says, uh, rule. And they, there was no definition of that. There's no clarity of that. One of the comments made in leadership meetings by one rural representative from Eastern Oregon mentioned that he has seen rule defined by some agencies as all the way up to you just have Yam Hill County and darn near might as well be in Washington County here. And so he, he would like that better defined so that these, these dollars actually get dispersed geographically, not just through entities focused in the Portland metro area. So hopefully that expands a little bit as well.
Perfectly. Thank you.
All right, Chair. And then the last bill that I did look into is our good OFREE bill. So there are big changes coming to this bill. It is up for a work session tomorrow, and the chair is looking at adopting the dash five amendment. From my understanding and as background, this is OFREE is the Oregon Forest Resource Institute. The original bill was eliminating that, creating a new Sound Forest Practices Board and account and deriving monies into that with much, much more environmental focus. This amendment, from how I read it, leaves OFREE in place. However, it still creates two other entities. It still creates the Forest and, uh, Sound Forest Practices Board and Account, and it creates a Family Forestland sub-account. The monies that were leveraged by the, the tax on this, one is that OFREE Board was the one that set the tax each year annually. That is being changed in the amendment to letting the State Forestry Department set that. And it does have in the language not to exceed. But I don't know if it gives broad abilities for the department to change that. But it, it creates three accounts, and the funds will be split up as follows. 50% of it will go to the Sound Forestry Practices sub-account. 35% will go to the Oregon Forest Resources Institute, and 17% will go to the Family Forestland sub-account. And I can put this in writing for you folks so that you know which each of those accounts do separate. But this bill seems to be a compromise. The original bill that eliminated OFREE in entirety was definitely on the, the agenda for the environmental lobby. And it seems like this is the bargained agreement where they, it stays in place, but it does create these other boards. This bill also puts some restrictions on OFREE. One is on its membership. It adds a voting member that must represent the environmental community. And it adds a voting member that who have, that must have experience with fishery or wildlife-related science. And then finally, where I said it put some restrictions on what the funds can use, this goes back to the origins of the bill. And there's, depending on who you're, you're hearing the, the background from, it dramatically changes. So the context of the changes, I think, can highlight what, what maybe the issues were. They are going to limit the OFREE's ability to expend funds that they cannot advertise on public education related to forest practices in the, in the sense of lobbying or, or campaigning. They also are going to institute that whatever funds are spent on must be reported to the governor on an annual basis by January 15th. So I, so this is definitely a compromise amendment that is scheduled to be amended, adopted. It keeps OFREE in existence. It, it definitely reduces it in scope and funding. And it definitely sets up that I do not think this will be the last time we have a conversation on it. So I do want to report out on that. The good news is it's not going away, but it will, it is definitely going to have to watch and maybe advocate to the executive branch how it's operating and the good things it's doing so that additional bills like the original one don't come forward in the, in the future. And I will pause there, Chair, if you'd like me to.
Any questions for Philip? Doesn't look like we have any questions.
All right. And then the last two.
Commissioner Bangs has a question there.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't want to interrupt. I was just going to ask about a separate bill later on, so if you're going to continue, please continue. Sorry.
Those were the bill specifics. I was going to dive over to, I guess, the only other bill specific, Commissioner Bangs, was I was just going to let you folks know that they, very unusually, and you already, I don't want to dive into it too much because you already got it in the newsletter, is they did move the Dogami budget out. That is the only budget that they've moved out of Ways and Means for this new biennium, but they've done that so that they have room and time to react if the governor tries to veto it. They don't, they are not hearing that, but they are, they want the ability to be, have time to react to anything if it does occur. But that did move out in its entirety as a separate, its own agency, not being consolidated like the governor's budget proposed. And then Commissioner Bangs, that was my last bill specific before I just highlighted some budget issues.
Excellent. I had a question, and I didn't know. Did the, so there was a House bill that was addressing accessory dwellings. Is that one still alive or is it dead?
Um, I was it the Senate bill or the, there was two House bills, and I believe a Senate bill. The Senate one is still alive.
Okay, which one is that? I'm sorry.
They were all the same. They, they just dropped a House version and a Senate version. I will, I will get that in writing to you and define where they adopted amendment, and I'm just blanking what that did. It didn't change it significantly. I believe other county, I know other counties are still in support of that, so I will get that as part of the email as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Not a problem. Just write that down. So I will get that to you in email. And I guess I just wanted to get a quick highlight on budget. Today, the co, the tri-chairs have announced their budget framework. And at some point, I believe Senator Johnson is much more of an expert on this than I am, as she's the one who helped to write it. But as a very high-level update, I want to just share with you a few elements of that that's going to be defining how the budget committees react and move forward. One is on schools. They have held the state school fund harmless. They are moving forward with that premise and asking other subcommittees to acknowledge that. In addition, on the Oregon Health Plan, they are moving forward without cuts to the eligibility or benefits. So those are the two big items that they held harmless. Now, a chair that I, they did, I just would like to note that does talk about the Health Plan members eligibility and benefits. There is still the conversation of hospitals and CCO cuts. And so I can, but it's going to probably be much less dramatic. And then in addition, the budget framework wants the subcommittees to acknowledge and look at addressing funding of Bala Measure 110 more robustly. And I think we are going to hear conversations of while the federal money is coming in and the state expects about $2.6 billion of the, I believe 6.4 the total state getting, they are going to set aside 520 million of that so that it can address the 2023, 25 biennium, so that there's a reserve there, a special purpose appropriation, so that that, that biennium is expecting deficit as well. So they're setting aside, that's 20% of those federal funds to address that. They're not going to tap the Education Stability Fund or Rainy Day Fund so that those budget pools are there to help cushion whatever that deficit looks like when we get closer to it. That will obviously change as we go through revenue forecasts. And then what I really wanted to highlight is you're going to hear rumors that while all this money is coming in, why are we still talking about cuts? They are still asking that the subcommittees work with agencies to come up with about a 1% reduction in agency costs and also build a list of potentially two or higher percent reductions. It doesn't mean they're going to implement them. But what they're trying to prepare for is that these federal dollars come in, if, as they learn about the strings being attached to them, that it doesn't cover a cost or a service in the agency, they have these lists already prepared so that people have time to react, services have time to react. Let's say, you know, they plan a hundred dollars towards something, and the Fed come back and say, no, you can't spend it that way. They already have that conversation about what, what does that 1% reduction or more look like? So there, there's a little bit of confusion, and I just want to clarify, I do think this is a, from my purview, a very prudent and fiscally conservative way to approach the state budget with all of the unknowns and, and the deficits before us. And so I will make sure you folks get a copy of this budget framework. It does, I think it does a great job at balancing the, the financial situation in front of the state and the services and the revenues that are coming in. But I, I know you have a busy agenda, and I don't want to dive too deep into that when I can get that to you in writing.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you, Philip. I think we have exhausted all of our time allotted for the update. I did have one, one quick question. Did you say anything about the levy assistance? Like, I think it was SB 622 or something like that, the funding for infrastructure. Did they, did you have anything on that?
What I do know about that is in the budget framework, it does talk about allocating $50 million of general funds for new bonding to serve as debt service for the new bonding. That's on top of what they're planning to reauthorize from last session. That's good news in my mind because that levy program is funded through bonds. So that they didn't say that's what it's going to be appropriated to. The bill itself passed out into Ways and Means, so it's in the right committee to receive the funding. But we just have to wait to that end game when they do the bonding bill, and it looks like they set aside general fund to pay for new bonding. So that's good news.
Super. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Philip. Appreciate the update.
All right. And Commissioners, my phone's on anytime if you need anything. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move right into our public health update. And Margot, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I do have a bit of an update, and I made some notes based upon some of the earlier comments, so hopefully I can answer them in my update in five minutes. Just so you know that we have three events happening this week. I just got a notice that the one in the Astoria Fairgrounds just wrapped up. We are getting more doses, as you keep hearing, but there's lots of talk about the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and there was a weekly vaccine allocation call today. And the Johnson &amp; Johnson is not being distributed to the counties or even coming into the state as was expected last week, at the end of last week. In fact, Friday, it changed from the morning until the afternoon, and so probably be a couple more weeks before we start seeing more of those doses. And again, in the county, at this point in time, we are saving the, for the most part, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine for those hard-to-reach populations, for those who have difficulty leaving home, even with the additional support of public transportation or homebound. And I think we've done a good job, for the most part, of reaching that population. I just wrapped up one of the follow-ups with South County, so that included Arch Cape, Falcon Cove, Cannon Beach, and received a list of individuals who are homebound or have caregivers who require vaccination, and one of our nurses will be following up with them. So I think we're on track with that. We have an outreach clinic scheduled in the Jewel community. That's been a great partnership with our, with our neighboring county, and there will actually be two events there, one in April and one March 31st. And then we have a big event on April 3rd. We've given lots of shots, and this is already outgated data, but there are 13,000 total doses administered. Also, the eligibility groups is very rapidly changing. I mean, it's staying constant, but based upon what was brought up earlier about what's happening in one county versus another county. We are, and what is an eligible essential employee? And so we're working on a strategy right now to collect information on all of those individuals who are fit into the essential worker category. Their completing surveys or their employees are helping them to complete surveys. And then really thinking about how can we do the greatest outreach and capture them at a single point in time? And, and looking at our future clinic schedule and, and making some of those clinics available to that population. Tiffany has done an extraordinary job at managing the scheduler, and so I think she's on this meeting, and if there's any questions, we can direct them towards her. You mentioned schools. So we have a public health nurse that is a liaison to the schools. We also have had a standing meeting that Vincent has hosted before I joined. We also have had a standing meeting that Vincent has hosted um before I uh joined the team uh with the superintendents. Every school has to have a blueprint that gets updated as guidance changes. So we're all navigating this collectively regarding, you know, who is infected, what the cohort is, what the group is, uh, what the age group is. But we're providing that consultation to the school districts and supporting them. And again, that guidance is evolving. The new investigative guidelines are 44 pages long, so that it means if there's a case of COVID, that we have 44 pages to reference on what to do with that particular case, depending upon who they are and what category they, they fit in. So that was updated a couple days ago. Um, and there's a couple things that we're monitoring a little bit more closely now, the state. And one is any breakthrough cases, um, which are not that many, but we want to understand why they're breaking through and what happens to those cases. Um, we submitted an attestation to the state. Um, uh, it was signed by myself and Commissioner Quila um saying that yes, we've addressed the, the priority individuals in phase one, we're ready to move to phase two. It doesn't mean we can't move to phase two, um, uh, which we are. Um, uh, actually, it's all kind of coming together. And I haven't checked my email in a little while and I know that some of what I'm saying is probably already outdated. Um, but there were a few groups within that attestation that um both Chris and I are following up on and providing that information to the state. Um, let's see, we're opening up. Um, I told you about the Johnson and Johnson. We are in the moderate risk category. I know there was some concern about businesses. And um, and the increase in cases. So why are those cases increasing? We're opening up. And so as we open up, more kids are returning to school, businesses are opening up, we're in spring break. We're just going to see more of it. Also, I think there's that false sense of security and of course I don't have data to back this up yet. Um, but um, you know, that with vaccination and more people getting vaccinated, there's less risk of exposure in the community. And that's definitely not the case. So we will continue with our messaging about prevention. And uh regardless of the vaccination coverage in the community, those prevention efforts will remain in place um as they do during flu season and the prevention of other uh respiratory illnesses. So we're monitoring those cases closely and um we follow up with them as we have been. And the goal is to get as many people vaccinated as possible, keep businesses going. And that positive energy that people are feeling that uh things are getting better, we want to keep that going, but do so safely. And you know, we're used to seeing spikes and dips in the cases. And I think what we're just going to see for the duration is just kind of that, those rolling hills. Is it's going to go up and it's going to go back down and it's going to go back up and it's going to go back down. But we're hopefully less likely to see the extremes that we've um been dealing with in the past. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Banks?
I just wanted to reiterate that I feel like our team is doing an amazing job in response to, to everything that is going on. Um, and then just make a note that since while I have you on camera, I've had a lot of phone calls from some young folks in the community that are interested in the Johnson and Johnson, but they're not interested in the two-shot um system. And so I don't know if in the future, I know since it's not available, it's not a, a immediate issue or concern. But in the future, are people going to be able to, to select a, a comfort level of the Johnson and Johnson versus the two-shot Moderna?
I don't think in the very near future, maybe once uh we're in May, um, that's very possible. I think the next step is that um there's going to be a decentralization of the vaccination primarily versus the Moderna, right? So instead of all the vaccine coming to the public health, the county, and then we are allocating it out. Our providers in the community that are registered pharmacists, hospitals will be able to um order their own vaccine. Um, at the same time, we will see more Johnson and Johnson. I don't know, and just looking at the numbers and the calls, that we will have as much Johnson and Johnson in the near future as we do the Moderna. And our message, and I'm receiving those calls and emails as well, is that if you want to get vaccinated, we have a spot for you. And if we don't, this week we will, next week, and we want you to get vaccinated with whatever vaccination is available. Um, so that's really the message. And it's effortless because even people don't want two shots, the, the reality is it's, we've made it so easy. You get that shot, you don't have to do anything else. We will remind you when your next appointment is and make it really easy for you.
Commissioner Webb has
Yeah. Um, the, um, to what extent are we going to be receiving information once our schools become more, uh, more, uh, more onsite? Um, to what extent are we going to get data that is specific to, to our school districts?
Well, that's a great question. So, um, there is data on uh cases. So the way we can, we can look at the school districts right now, there's two different ways. And I can pull that together for uh the next report for you. Is the case um data report on the state dashboards and then look at it by age group and by zip code. So I can extract that data and give you a general idea. We also know if and when there are outbreaks, weekly OHA pu- publishes a report of employers or wherever there's an outbreak. And so again, an outbreak in COVID can be one case depending upon the setting because it's a vulnerable population or high risk of, of more cases uh occurring. So I can um definitely get that data for you and have it prepared for um a future update.
Thank you, thank you. I would really, um, apparently there is some concern I'm getting from uh, from folks who are choosing not to send their kids back to s- to school to in-person learning. But at the same time, they want to be able to monitor what's going on in that school district. Um, they feel that's an important part of, you know, their decision-making process. So, and I, I know that we always run into these HIPAA regulations about, and that because we're a small, sparsely populated place, sometimes I realize there are, there are always those issues. So I, I hope we'll be able to find a way to be very forthcoming um without sacrificing anybody's privacy.
Yeah, that's a good question. And that's always been a challenge in school districts because there's always, quite frankly, almost always some type of communicable diseases being passed around a school. And it may or may not be reportable by law. Um, and then a number of years ago, the state passed legislation that required school districts to report their vaccination rates um per district. Um, and so we're a long ways away from that, if ever, regarding COVID. But that privacy is very, very important. So we can look at aggregate data and extract that from the state. I don't know that school districts would be publishing that kind of data anytime soon. And again, the cases are far and few between and children are primarily asymptomatic. So we really don't know what the actual number is. But again, I'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
If we don't have any other questions, I think we'll uh move on the agenda. Thank you very much, Margot, for the public Uh, let's move on to ordinance amendments, use of county right-of-way.
Chair Quila, members of, of the board. Um, I'm going to give a brief update on where we are after a lot of conversations, a lot of uh feedback from the community. Um, when we started this ordinance um process, there were really three, three goals. One was to protect public safety and community livability. The second was to limit and manage county liability. Uh, the third was to provide a clear direction for permitting and enforcement purposes. Um, so after much conversation, um, staff um and the board um and feedback has uh got us to a point where we have suggested a framework uh for the right-of-way ordinance. And I just want to walk through that really quickly. Um, the first is that we would require permits, which are free, but we would require permits for any right-of-way incursion. Um, we would prohibit commercial activity, but we would, uh, we would allow seasonal flour and vegetable stands, but they would be required to be permitted. Um, and then we would have a size restriction uh for the stand itself in the right-of-way. So, so that's kind of the framework we have been uh working through. That's a little bit different than the ordinance that was presented to the board in the first reading. Um, and if your board feels that those are uh reasonable parameters at this point to move forward, then we would ask your board to continue the public hearing until um April 14th. So the county council has a chance to actually prepare the ordinance with those specifications. So, so that's all from, from me for, for right now. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for our county manager? Thank Hi, Commissioner Banks?
Sorry, just for clarification, the, the permit will remain, remain free um moving forward also, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, go ahead.
No, yes, that, that's my short answer, yes.
Okay, perfect. And um seasonal, uh, what about, and I know that I'm throwing a wrench right out there, but um what if it's not a, a, a farm produce or flour, but it's also seasonal? Would that be still acceptable to the county?
So, any use of the right-of-way would go through the permit process. And so Public Works will look at all those requests and see how it fits into the ordinance. And so, you know, there could be other ac- permitted activities in the right-of-way, so.
I just want to say thank you very much to you and our staff for addressing this issue because we are a rural community and a lot of people identify with these stands and, and enjoy seeing them and enjoy frequenting them. I appreciate the fact that we have done such an astronomical effort to make sure to still include our, our rural communities' um hobby stands. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I will say that I have talked more about the right-of-way in the last two weeks than I have in the previous 29 years. So, so that could be a good thing or a bad thing depending on how you look at it. But I do want to thank staff too, um Ted, Gail, Monica, Joanna. Um, a lot of folks have, have, have been helping us get to where we are. So thank all of them and thanks to the board for pushing us in the right direction, so.
I'd just say thank you to staff as well and coming up with something that's fair and equitable and addresses the concerns. Um, I know we talked about this back earlier this month at a work session, I think uh towards the beginning of the month. And we were all uh favorable to allowing flower stands and um stands that can be operated without a safety concern. Um, I think a lot of the feedback that we've received, in fact, a lot of it is from folks that live on state highways. And state highways are not subject to these, um, to this at all. I mean, se- they have their own uh right-of-way and uh state highways actually don't allow for anything in, in a state right-of-way. Um, so a lot of people, I think, that have contacted us, uh, just think that this is something that's applies countywide and it doesn't. It's only county roads and county right-of-ways. Any other uh questions? Okay, I think that, that's a good direction that we're, that we're headed and we'll bring this back then um on April, what was it, April 16th? April 14th?
April 14th. And so um it's still on the agenda. So during uh the, the agenda, Chair Quila, um, Ted will still give a brief staff report with the recommendation that it be continued until April 14th.
Okay. Thank you, county manager. We'll move on to planning commission applications, uh Bruce Francis replacements, and Gail is here.
Yes, thank you Commissioners, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. Our longtime planning commission chair, Bruce Francis, retired or resigned from the board in January of this year uh as he is moving out of the state. So we have to find a replacement member for the planning commission. We did send out an advertisement back in January. We had a uh application deadline of March 1st. We received two applications, uh, and these are listed on page five of your agenda packet. Uh, the first application was from Carrie Johnson. The second application was from Tad Peterson. And both reside in the northeast planning area of the county, which is District Four, Commissioner Banks' district. So we've presented these to you tonight, not for your consideration, but just for your information. Uh, we will be bringing back a separate formal appointment agenda item at the April 14th agenda. And uh if we do have any applications, well, and obviously we will, if we have an application that would not be appointed on April 14th, that application would continue to be kept on file for two years. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, and move on. Thank you, Gail. Uh, Human Service Advisory Council, um, Grant Recipient Recommendation Awards to Outside Agencies.
I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet with you and discuss these recommendations for the 2021 funding to outside agencies. And we also want to thank Heather Mather for putting, for the help in putting together this PowerPoint presentation. Um, I know that we're really short on time, so could we slip over? Because I know that this presentation is also in your packet. Could we slip over to goal, uh, slide three?
Excuse me, could we be, could we know who's speaking?
This is Linda Crandall, correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Um, it's our hope that these funds reach not only the needy, but the very neediest of the residents of Platteville County. Often we're their only voice and is with this in mind that we pay attention to the little projects as much as the big ones. Some of these little projects deal with such basic needs as getting IDs and necessary documentation like birth certificates. And the, while these are small projects, they can make really major impacts. And since I know we're really short on time, um, can we skip over to slide, the slide showing the, what is that, number nine, I think? That, that gives the recommendations? I wish we had the time to go through all of these, but I know that we're really short on time tonight. These are the, these are the organizations that um we are making recommendations for this evening. And I know that all of their applications are in your packet, but do you have any specific questions on any of these that you'd like to have more information on?
Commissioner Banks has a question.
Um, good evening. Uh, so I was looking through the packet and I just want to say each and every single one of these organizations, I, it was fascinating to read. I wish we could give them all lots of money, um, because they all have amazing goals and agendas. But I was looking at, and I'm wondering if it's a discrepancy, um, but on page uh 30, 37, um, there's no information, like there's no application information other than the number allotted to, to this um specific organization. And I was just wondering if it was a discrepancy from our packet or if they just didn't submit a full application.
Oh, which organization was it?
Um, Grace Food Pantry.
Marion, you want to take that?
Hi, this is Marion. I have my mic on and I am going to look quickly at the Grace Food Pantry application. And I don't know exactly what you have, but actually what I have in front of me is I do have a full proposal packet. And they were requesting 750 to produce, to produce, excuse me, to purchase USDA food from the Regional Food Bank. So yes, their, their packet, their, excuse So yes, their, their packet, their, excuse me, their request proposal packet did come in complete.
Perfect, I wanted to make sure just because, you know, this is the people's money and if we were ever to be challenged on an application or on a process, I wanted to make sure, even though I don't have it in front of me, that somebody has it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks for checking.
And Commissioner, when this comes before the board for approval, we can make sure that whatever glitch happened, we can confirm that that's fixed.
Any other questions?
I actually do.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Well, I wanted to worry this to death with accountability measures because like Commissioner Banks, I saw that there was so much good work that needs to be done. My ongoing concern about this is here are all these needs, all these worthy causes and worthy organizations, and I feel some level of frustration that we can't do more than $30,000. We have done a strategic plan, we are looking at our whole community needs. I don't know how we evolved the plan to consider this, but this, the CCO, there are a variety of issues of unmet needs in Clatsop County and I, I'd like to put those in the administration, the county manager, have those items go in our to-do list at some point when we're not dealing with a pandemic and flooded with other kinds of organizational issues. I'm glad that we're going to have a complete packet. I thank you for the work that you do. It's, it's the neediest of the needy, it's very clear, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Any other questions for Linda or Mary? Commissioner Webb.
Commissioner Webb. I'd like, I don't know whether this looks the same as, as the synopsis of the package that I had, but I was a little confused about the, the comments that were made about some of the, I think there were two organizations that, that were funded that had very negative comments made that I think were all related to the fact that they were applying for, for staff and administration funds. But those two organizations were still funded. So I don't, I'm a little confused about that.
Well, actually, I'm confused about that too. I'm going to look really quickly through which ones we did fund, but our general policy is that we don't want to fund staff or personnel since that's a recurring expense. We're looking to fund program or projects within the program that have a beginning and an end so that we know that it, the money goes to the completion of that project within the program and that we can see the outcomes for it. Whereas if we do fund a staff position at the end of the period of time, there's a recurring need for that position to be, to be re, re, what, refinanced.
Reallocated for the next year.
Thank you. So what, racially, so negative comments, reject reasons? Can you help me a little bit, Commissioner Webb, on, on what?
Chair Quayla, if I might, really quickly, on page 19 and, and 20 of the packet, Commissioner Webb, is the table that has the scoring. And there were two that had a note that talked about administrative. And that was the North Coast Food Web and the Astoria Warming Center. I guess, and there was a couple more, Clatsop Casa and NAMI. And so, and I think all of those were not recommended for funding, if I'm correct.
That's correct. And what was confusing me about that, though, was that, first of all, there were, there were no scores given for the North Coast Food Web or for the non-recommended. And three of them with very low scores, the Lower Columbia Q Center, the North Coast Food Web and Restoration House, excuse me, that, that was all, that was coded and with a very high score. But, so we are, are we assuming that with these ones that were not recommended, the reason they were not was because they relied too heavily on funding salary and administrative issues? Is that what we're assuming?
You're, you're, you're correct in that assumption because that was one of the first hurdles, if you will, that they went over is to look at what were we funding?
Okay.
If it showed that they were funding operational expenses, then that sort of disqualified them unless there was extra money left over and then maybe we could look at it and see if there was something that we could then fund on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Commissioner Banks, we've got about one minute.
Okay, it's just a comment, but I think I see what Commissioner Webb is talking about. The pages 19 and 20 and pages 105 and 106 are different in just how they're presented. And so when, when we go back to this or when it comes through for approval, if we can make those pages align with each other, that would probably help with any confusion.
Okay, could you give me those page numbers again?
Page numbers 19 and 20 and page numbers 105 and 106. Because I, I can see what Commissioner Webb is, is, is seeing. And I, I think that that might be the issue.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Banks. You must have said that much better than I did.
If we don't have any other questions, we'll go ahead and close the work session. Thank you very much, Linda and Mary. We have six o'clock on the dot, so we will roll right into our regular session at this time. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session. Can we take the roll?
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Chair Quayla?
Here. Is there a chance to review the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to business from the public. So this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. And Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Yes. We have Nancy Chase.
Hi, this is Nancy. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Nancy Chase, 3026 Northeast 22nd in Portland, Oregon, 97212. And I own a, a short-term rental in Cove Beach as well as a house in Fort Stevens, so I'm very vested in Clatsop County and want to thank you for all your hard work. Yesterday I sent an email to you, to the board and to staff. And it's a lot of, it's really summarizing short-term rental owners in Cove Beach, what are their thoughts were after your workshop in February. And so there's a letter there from Alan Soleris, who is kind of heading up the F herd along with me. Alan helped on the Arch Cape Short-Term Rental Ordinance years ago, and so he's very versed in this. And also as a procedural, we put, we attached the procedural changes matrix that staff prepared for your workshop and added our comments to it for you. And I think the good news is that 70% of those items that were brought up by staff as possible changes, we are, think are, are great ideas and we fully support. The remaining items, we either have questions or we feel more work or we're sure, we like to understand the logic a little bit better. So I think the good news is that we're positive about this and that we don't feel that, that an ad hoc committee is going to help on this matter. That emotions are high, people are kind of set in their camps and we would just like the normal procedure of board hearing the testimony, making the decisions to be the process that goes forward. I think just from listening to you at the workshop, I thought you all had a good handle on it and you have tons of testimony and there's probably more process forward. But to me, we just prefer not to have a committee and just get the matter done with and trust your good judgment. So that, that's it for now, but thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Clerk of the Board, do we have anyone else registered to speak? I'm sorry, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Jonathan Felix Lund?
Jonathan? You can state your name and address for the record? Can't hear you?
He must not be on the call, he called today to register.
Okay.
He was here, but he's not now.
I thought I saw his name come, come across there.
Okay.
What else registered to speak?
No, that's the end of it.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on at this time to the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, move adoption of the consent calendar.
I second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify with an aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to Commissioners Liaison Reports. And Commissioner Banks?
Well, last week was spent at County College receiving a lot of information in a very short, short span of time. We covered budgeting, finances, natural resources, just to say the least. I, I can say after the discussion or the entire day spent on finances and budgeting, I am extremely grateful for our fabulous county staff who takes over that, that entire, you know, mathematical equation. That, that was a mind-blowing day and I am very grateful for the situation that we have here in Clatsop County with some very thorough staff. Other than that, it, it was really enjoyable to be at a groundbreaking for our new jail. And so those were just those tiny highlights in my week, so thank you.
Yeah, I have wonderful soil out there. Commissioner Thompson?
Oh, thank you. So it's lovely to have someone offering public testimony that says they trust our good judgment. I have to say that's refreshing and pleasant. One of the sweetest things that has ever happened to me as a commissioner was to get the invitation to look for local housebound neighbors and to be able to reach out to housebound neighbors and to offer them COVID vaccines. That was so sweet, so nourishing, and I'm grateful to everybody who was part of that and gave me that very sweet moment. That almost makes up for being at AOC and listening to all the contention about the legislative process because it, the division of opinions within AOC and within the state legislature give, give great concern to me. Really, we run, we run to get elected, but once we're elected, we have to govern. And as we govern, the meeting in the middle, what's Commissioner Banks phrase? Moderates meet in the middle? And even vegetarians can, can meet in the middle, yes? So how do we govern together? Commissioner Toyoka's been talking about teamwork. That's absolutely right. The county manager has worked with us to have a strategic plan that provides foundations for us to grow, structure, to deliver services that give value to taxpayers. And so that's, that's very nourishing, that's very positive. Get to go back and look at what the legislature, in their desire, in their zeal to do good, enacts that may have negative consequences for rural Oregon, not taking into account our circumstances here. Because, again, I keep reading these books that talk about not just racism, which is a pernicious, absolutely unacceptable reality, but also the pervasive nature of caste whereby we humans stratify each other and discriminate against each other for any reason or no reason. I mean, it's that ladder dynamic that we seek, I think, as a Board of County Commissioners to, to remedy, to rectify. As, because what we're looking at is how do we do good services for everybody in a way that's equitable? So echoing the praise for staff, for my colleagues and for all of the constituents who are so eager to help us do our job well, I just want to say thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, and thank you for your outreach to your homebound neighbors there in South County. That's so important, I know the county health director really appreciates that. Commissioner Toyoka?
Hello, everyone. Like Commissioner Banks, you know, spent the week in County College. Pluses and minuses, you know, during some of the budget and finance meetings, I did catch a good nap, no kidding, I'm joking. No, really useful information, great just to see. But I think the most useful so far of the County College are these breakout cohorts where you get time to talk to, you know, other commissioners from different counties. They're new as well and some are, you know, some of the other moderators have some experience with Oregon State University and so on. And that's what, that's been the most beneficial portion of that County College. And hopefully with Commissioner Webb, I'll chalk to her offline, but one thing I've learned is on the Public Works, we're working on the site assessments. Some of the people I've been talking to say, hey, this is a great time, we've been through this, you need to look at zoning, you need to look at land use. All these issues that come up while you're trying to find a new location, they could affect how your county can find more locations for affordable housing, find more, you know, business opportunity zones. So don't just isolate it to your Public Works, look at it where you're looking at all these areas. How could it impact your county? How can you do good for the county in zoning or business zone? So that has been a wonderful part of that County College, just those cohorts where we can actually talk to some other people. Thank you.
Sorry about that, I was muted there. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, the, the Arts Council is kind of reinventing itself by doing something very energetic, which is compiling a list of all of the people in the county, the organizations and the individuals who make a living or are advocates for the arts. And it's, it's quite an intense story. And I'm decided that with my work with the tourism folks, I'm going to put them together with the Arts Council because our tourism folks are terrific marketers. Artists aren't always, don't, they have this fabulous talent, but they don't necessarily know how to, how to market themselves. And so I think I'm going to try to sort of put those issues. And so I think I'm going to try to sort of put those issues together and make the arts a more integral part of our marketing for tourism. So more coming about that later. I am, I also am very, very disappointed in the legislative session this year. I don't know if any of you saw Roger Dorban's letter to the editor about the fact that we have hired a lobbyist, and I will contact Roger, who I admire enormously privately, maybe to explain why we decided to hire a lobbyist. And part of the reason we did was because of our commissioners' experience with being very frustrated that we were not, we didn't have the staff to track what was going on. And I think it has been a wonderful exercise to have a lobbyist. I have not found them, a couple of their comments indicated where their political leanings went, but that doesn't bother me. I can usually smoke those out. But I've really, I hope that the rest of the commission appreciates as much as I do the how important the lobbyist has been for us in this session. However, I am monumentally disappointed in the way that the Republican Party is behaving in the legislature, and I'm really, really sad about it. And at a time of great crisis in our country, I think it's time for us not to take our ball and go home. I don't think that's why people elect us. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb, and I appreciate your comments about why we hired a lobbyist. Certainly, we are volunteer, part-time commissioners. We don't have the luxury that a lot of commissions do, that they can be down in Salem and do their own lobbying. So that's why it's advantageous for us to have someone to assist us. And we also are very blessed with great representation down there, and we have a great staff. So we're in a good position, and I think this just makes us stronger by having PacWest on board and helping us. I had one question, is Commissioner Nebiker still part of the Arts Council? I would assume that she is.
Unfortunately, she is not.
Oh, she's not?
Actually, she is not, because she assumed that she was there as a representative from the commission and did not have a place on the Arts Council. But I would love to have her be back on the Arts Council, because she certainly was a terrific, but I'm also really happy with the leadership of the council right now. They're very committed people, very knowledgeable. Jennifer Crockett is on the Arts Council now, you know, I mean, it's a really, really very rich membership. So I continue always to be so mesmerized by the people who volunteer for our committees. The hours they put in, you know, it just amazes me that we have just such a fabulous citizenry that offers their expertise, which is often abundant, and their time and their commitment. So we are incredibly lucky, I think, as a county.
I couldn't agree more. We have outstanding volunteers in this community, and they don't get the recognition that they deserve for all of the hard work that they put in. But yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I'll go ahead and go to our county manager.
Chair Quayle, members of the board, just a couple of things to quickly share. One is, there's been a lot of conversation about the American Rescue Act and some of the funding that may be coming down to the county. You know, staff is having some conversations to create a framework to bring to your board and having many conversations with your board and with stakeholders about how we might develop a multi-year expenditure plan for that money. But as you know, there's still a lot of uncertainty about what the parameters of the funding will be. So we're still in kind of a wait mode, but we are talking through a number of potential options, and I'll start talking with your board about that in our weekly one-on-ones just to kind of give you a sense of some of the very, very preliminary framing that is going on. Secondly, we are blessed in so many ways to have Margot working with us in Public Health as the interim Public Health Director, but she is helping us envision a recruitment process, and so we have issued an RFP so that we can have an executive recruiting firm help us with that recruitment. It's a very important job. It's going to be a challenge on the recruitment side, just because public health is going through a lot of strain right now, just generally speaking. So we'll be retaining an executive firm to help us do that. We hope to have a permanent hire sometime in the summer. You know, Margot's been great about being flexible with us, but no, I'm sure that she will encourage us sometime during the summer to move the process along. So that's kind of where we are with those two important processes. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Oh, I wish we could keep her, have her stay. She's doing such a great job and really appreciate all that she's done for the Health Department. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing. This is ordinance 21-01, Standards for Access Permits and Other Activities Occurring in County Public Rights Away. We did discuss this in our work session earlier this evening. This is a continuation of a public hearing on ordinance number 21-01, Standards for Access Permits and Other Activities Occurring in County Public Rights Away. And I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Ted McLean.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Ted McLean, Public Works Director. So with the recent direction that we had in our work session and the information that we got from that, we'd like to postpone tonight's second reading of the ordinance and allow our council to draft the new language and then have the second reading on April 14th.
Okay. Thank you, Public Works Director. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we postpone the hearing until, oh, Ted, it just fell out of my brain. Until when?
April 14th.
April 14th, 2021.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to postpone the second reading of ordinance number 21-01 to our April 14th meeting. All those in favor signify with an aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Nay?
Nay.
Roll call vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Thompson? Aye. Commissioner Toyoka?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Nay.
Commissioner Quayle?
Aye. Eyes have it, we will move to our, we will have this on our April 14th agenda. Thank you, Ted. Next on the agenda is the appointments to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee on page 269.
Tiffany, are you on the call?
Yes, I am. Just one moment.
Okay.
There's Tiffany.
Thanks, I thought I had more time. I'm downloading, I'm just getting the item up here. One moment.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. I apologize for the delay. I'm coming before you tonight with two appointments to the Ambulance Service Advisory Committee. As I said at the last meeting, where we were seeking appointments, this is a happy occasion. We will have a full committee for the first time since 2015. The two appointments are, one, reappointment to a different position, and the first is Dr., excuse me, the first is Lila Wickham from the Medical Reserve Corps in Cannon Beach. She has agreed to fill one of the citizen positions, and that's a great asset to the committee. The second is a reappointment of sorts. Dr. Miss Livietz has been the medical advisor for the Ambulance Service Advisory, and that position has been assumed by Shannon Berry, and Dr. Miss Livietz would like to fill the citizen position at this time. The other part of the motion is to a housekeeping matter. When we appointed Chief Joey Daniels and Tita Montero to the committee in 2019, I made the error of appointing them to a two-year committee. When we were reviewing and updating the plan, I was reminded that the first term of an ambulance service advisory committee member is three years. So the second part of the motion tonight is to adjust those terms from two years to three years. We've communicated both with Chief Daniels and Tita, and they would like to serve for that additional year.
Okay, thank you, Tiffany. Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Thompson?
I would expect that to be two motions rather than one. Okay.
I think so, yeah.
It's split into two different motions.
Okay.
We want to make the first motion there?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the ASAA Committee's recommendation to appoint Lila Wickham and Gina, I thought it was Miss Lewitz.
Miss Livietz, yeah.
Miss Livietz, thank you. We will have phonetic pronunciation included. To the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee.
Okay. Second, it's moved and seconded to approve the ASAA Committee's recommendation to appoint Lila Wickham and Gina, Miss Livietz, to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. All those in favor signify with an aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then the next motion.
So I move to amend the term limits for Chief Joey Daniels and Tita Montero from 2021 to 2022.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to amend the term limits for Joey Daniels and Tita Montero from 2021 to 2022. All those in favor signify with an aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany, and thank you for all your hard work on the Vaccine Task Force.
Thank you.
And we don't have any other items on the agenda. Do we have anything for the good of the order?
Could I just say one thing?
Yes, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I had a conversation with Paul Williams. Paul, I'm going to do what my husband calls ratting you out. I called and said to Paul, wouldn't it be interesting if we could, as county commissioners, receive one of those meals that we're paying for the prisoners to eat? Because I thought it would be a very educational experience if we actually had to eat the food that we're having our prisoners eat. So that took Paul and me off into a long series of conversations about the future of, I want to call it, community corrections in Clatsop County. Paul, do you think that's a fair assessment? And all I can say is, with great respect for Commissioner Toyoka's participation as the liaison, I'm hopeful that we, as a county Board of Commissioners, are going to take a deeper and broader look at the conditions that exist in our county that lead to criminal behavior insofar as we're able to impact those and ameliorate those. So I just want to have that go in our basket too, County Manager Boone, because we don't have enough complicated things to look at, and I think that would be a good, you know what I mean? We're blessed with a lot of fine people who are concerned about this issue, and I think we want to be building that basket of things that we're looking at. So Chief Deputy Williams, thank you for that conversation today. I'm looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments for the good of the order? Commissioner Webb?
Yes, I would like to explain my nay vote on postponing the public hearing. I guess I am confused about the way that a public hearing is proposed. And I called the county manager today, and he kind of talked me down, and I may be confusing the enactment of an ordinance with what is common in the land use procedure. And so I think I understand that better now, but I just feel like we did kind of a weird procedural thing, and that what we should have done was to tell the public that what we proposed in the ordinance and what this public hearing was supposed to be about tonight, we should be rescinding it. I don't think we should be postponing it. I think we should say, we're taking this back to the drawing board. And so, and then our staff is coming back to us whenever with a revised ordinance, and then the procedures for public hearings would commence, whether it be one or two. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Joanna?
Joanna Lyons-Antley, County Counsel. Can you all hear me? I'm having problems with my microphone.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you very much. So I just want to address that, because I think it's a pretty common question, and there are entities throughout the state who do it differently. But if you look at the statute, it says you can have, you can make substantial changes between the first and the second reading of an ordinance and adopt at the conclusion of the second reading of the ordinance if you read the substantial changes into the record. And so what my goal would be, would be to continue the second reading, come back with those changes, put it in the agenda packet, give everybody an opportunity to look that over, including the public, because of course that's posted on our website, it's a public document, and then have a public hearing on those proposed changes. Reading that into the record will then make it legally effective. And I will apologize to you, Commissioner Webb, it is a change on how the county usually has done it in the past. If there were any changes, you would go back to that first hearing, but I felt like, reading the law, that there had been a lot of discussion about the issue already, and that I felt confident that we could bring back an ordinance that would be satisfactory.
Thank you. Thank you, thank.
Okay.
I really appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
And Commissioner Webb, thank you for asking that question and bringing that up and clarifying it procedurally what your objection was. And thank you, Joanna, to clarify exactly where we're headed here. And we're going to have a segment, we've continued this second reading, and then we will have it noticed, people will have an opportunity to see it. it noticed, people have an opportunity to see it and to comment, and then we'll bring it back as a, as the only modified at the second reading, and we'll read it into the record, correct? Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Any, any other items for the good of the, good of the order? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.